Listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations provided by staff unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the public hearing agenda. With that, I will ask for a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Move approval. Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions? Same sign. Motion passes. Now we'll go over the consent agenda items. Starting with item number one, a request from SS Holding Company for review and approval of a site plan for property located at 4814 Southwest 9th Street and for the following type-two design alternatives. Item A, a reduction of the minimum required primary frontage coverage from 85% to 47%. Item B, allow a primary frontage build-two zone of 17 feet when 0 to 5 feet are required. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda? Anyone in the commission?
Just to clarify, is there anybody that wants this item discussed when we say pulled from the consent? Item 1, Southwest 9th Street. Otherwise, it'll stay on the consent agenda.
Seeing none, item 1 will remain on the consent agenda. Item number 2, it's a request from Unity Point Health for review and approval of a site plan and for the following type-two design alternatives in accordance with city code for property located in the vicinity of 1319 Pennsylvania Avenue. Item A, to allow for primary frontage coverage of 19% when a primary frontage coverage of at least 80% is required. B, allow 15% transparency on the street facing north facade where a minimum transparency of 18% is required. C, allow a 22-foot, 6-inch horizontal segment on the west elevation and a 20-foot, 10-inch horizontal segment on the east elevation without transparency where no horizontal segment of a story's facade greater than 15 feet in width shall be without transparency. And D, waive the requirement to provide a principal entrance on the primary frontage facade per city code. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item on the public hearing agenda tonight? Anyone in the commission? Oh, we have a couple individuals that would like to hear this item. Item number 2 will be pulled from the consent and into the public hearing items. Item number 3 in the consent agenda is a request from Watt-Lau-Bud-Havett of Iowa for the following regarding two parcels located in the vicinity of 1806 East Park Avenue. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. And B, to rezone approximately the northernmost 50 feet of the two parcels from N-3A Neighborhood District to P-2 Public Civic and Institutional District to allow the construction of an open-air accessory building for meditation and other uses associated with assembly place of worship use. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item in the public hearing agenda? I see a couple of hands. Item number 3 will also be removed from the consent agenda and into the public hearing. And we have a request to move one of the items into the consent agenda as well. That will be item number 4, which is a request from EcoSource LLC for the following regarding two parcels located in the vicinity of 1001 Raccoon Street. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. B, amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from downtown mixed-use to business park. C, to rezone the property from DXR Downtown District to EX Mixed Use District to allow the expansion of an existing industrial service warehousing and office use. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to keep this item in the public hearing agenda? Anyone in the commission? Seeing none, we can move this item to consent. And I believe that's all the items we have.
Yeah, items 1 and 4.
Items 1 and 4. And I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign. Number 2. Item number 2 will be the first item heard in the public hearing. I will not read it again. I will hand it over to Michael to present for staff.
Sure. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Michael Dell, planning staff here. This is proposed development in vicinity of 1319 Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicant is proposing a 16,800 square foot, two-story healthcare clinic, kind of a campus-like setting for the surrounding development and surrounding healthcare uses. The existing site is 27,855 square feet, about .64 acres. The existing zoning on-site is RX2 with the mixed-use districts. The surrounding development is generally medical campus and some single household residential properties. Let me scroll down here. Here's a top end view of it. Here in the north end are the subject parcels, just to give you kind of a general overview of the area here. In terms of the relief they are asking for, here's more pictures of the existing sites also, just to give you a kind of frame of reference. Here's a copy of their site plans middle that they currently have in. This is a general layout of the building. You have kind of an angled approach here towards Pennsylvania Avenue, kind of a little bit angled back in towards Roosevelt Avenue on the north side. They'll have the parking oriented here on the eastern side of the building also. Here's just a quick example of what they're proposing in terms of landscaping oriented towards a sidewalk entrance on the western side of the building and some landscaping proposed around the outsides of the building. Here's their proposed elevations, just to give you an idea, to give a little bit more credence to the relief they're asking. This is the eastern side of the building here, western elevation here too, and the northern elevation. In terms of the relief they're asking for, they're, with the building type that they're under, they have to meet a primary frontage coverage of at least 80%. Due to the orientation of the proposed building, only 19% is going to be within this primary build-two zone along the western side of the property. With the orientation of the parking being proposed on the eastern side of the building and having pedestrian access to the western side, staff thinks it's appropriate to grant this relief. In terms of transparency for this project, a minimum of 18% transparency is required on all street-facing facades. The north facade along Roosevelt Avenue is proposed to have just 15% of transparency. The main issues are the grading changes on the north side of the property, and they have extended brick that's kind of providing a little bit of more surface level with that grade changes on the north side of the property. This kind of relates to their blank wall segments also. No horizontal segment of the story's facade greater than 15% should be without transparency. The west and east facades contain secure stair towers that exceed this requirement. Trying to find a better picture of that, just to show them exceeding the requirements It just looks like it's freezing out. But they're providing greater transparency out of our requirements above the measured transparency level, and that's why staff is supportive of this request. Principal entrances are required in the general building type along all primary frontages. The west and the east facades contain this connectivity to the pedestrian realm. A staff entrance has been proposed on, within visibility of this primary frontage facade, as well as the sidewalk connection, and it can't be overhanged to visibly orient people towards this building entrance, and that's why staff is supportive of this request also. Apologies, this is kind of frozen up on me. But to our staff recommendation, we recommend approval of these type-two design alternative requests based on the designs that we've been presented with the orientation of the building and the parking being on the eastern side of the building and providing this pedestrian connection on the western side of the building. Apologies, it's freezing up again. We did not receive any comment cards for this property and the proposed type-two design Any questions over that? I know it's difficult to kind of orient yourself with the elevations, but I'm open to hearing any questions from the commission.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So you're saying the north elevation from that other graphic is the one that violates, is under your threshold?
For which relief?
The 15% to 18% transparency, or am I misunderstanding B?
Correct. Let me bring this up here.
And north is identified as item 3?
So item 3 is the west and eastern facades, and that's 15 feet in width without transparency.
The challenge is that you have, on the west facade, you have the stair tower and some limitations based off of how the interior of the building's being used. And so we just have larger sections of building that don't have transparency than what we would typically allow. But we think it fits with the overall character of the architecture.
Sure. And on the east side, if you can see here, there's a grade change, and that's why they're extending the brick wall here up a little bit more, and that's why it's not meeting the transparency requirements and the blank wall requirements. And that's the same for the western facade here.
So which walls are at issue? Is it north or is it west, or which one is the issue?
So for the build-two zone and the primary frontage coverage, it's the north elevation right here where my pointer's at, meeting that build-two zone, and that's the first initial relief that they're asking for.
Maybe, and I think I muddled it, maybe just very quickly, just A is the west facade, and I know that's what you just said, right?
I'm an idiot. I'm looking below the line. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Each one of them is dealing with a different aspect of the building, so they kind of blend together, but it...
Appreciate your coverage on that. I just looked at the wrong side of the line. Sorry. It does raise the question, though. I'm actually curious. So when you have a line that's angled like that, how do you actually calculate the amount of windows? Do you actually look at the amount I can see from the plane? Or would you actually count the actual window as fully flush against the wall? And if you do the latter, would they actually pass?
So it's measured within, from the grade level, within a certain distance, like 2 to 8 feet. And the blank wall is basically within this area also, measured on a facade facing a primary street. So are you asking if there's a grade change? Does that change your measurement level, or...
Isn't the elevation of note angled? So I'm seeing a smaller sliver of the window than the window actually exists.
On which elevation?
Are we talking north?
The west side, I mean, there is a skew or an angle to the west side of the building. So that's, if you go to the site plan sheet, so that does, but what we try to do is just identify one of the facades as being, you know, facing the street, even though technically some of the south, you know, that's the bottom part of the building, so to speak, also faces the street a little bit, but...
I bet if you gave them full width of the window on that west side, you'd actually work out above the threshold.
Yeah, if you wanted to include what we ended up calling the south facade as part of, you know, but in general, I think the short story is that we're supporting the relief that they're asking for. There's some unique aspects to this building, the site, you know, the building is a little bit askew. They're trying to maintain this campus environment they have with the building to the south. We appreciate the efforts they have made for connectivity and pedestrian routes, so we're supporting their request.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I will invite the applicant to present. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address.
The applicant.
The applicant?
They can't be here, so I'm gonna be in their stead. So I'm Justin Bailey from Invision Architecture, 900 Marlberry Street. I guess I'm kind of opening it up for questions. I kind of, a lot of it was stated by staff, as to why we're here and by the four, why we're tying for the four type-two. So yeah, I'm just sort of opening it up to staff for any other questions that you might have. I really don't have anything to present. I think it was well done, so...
I'm interested in the floor plate or the footprint of the building. Is this done for any internal reason? Is it done for an exterior design purpose?
So the campus-like feel plays a big part of that. So as you know, the Penn Med Building has parking to the east as well. So our building has kind of, has done the same thing because we are tying staff. So some staff are over in the Penn Med Building, as well as some staff will be here over in this building as well. So we're trying to tie, number one, the parking, the campus feel, and the kind of staff throughput between each of the buildings. And then, as you put the entrance, obviously, to the east side, a lot of that back-of-house function happens then on the backside of the building, or in our case, to the west, like you said, or what was talked about was a stair tower on the west side. So a lot of that back-of-house happens then towards the back of the entrance.
I think part of the question is just out of curiosity of why not just a square footprint? What's, you know, what's the creativity?
So the creativity, so we wanted to guide patients and people coming from mostly going to be Interstate 235 up through the north side of the campus. So as they enter the building, they're presented with this long wall, which draws your eyes up into the drive and really sort of narrows the vision down to turn the left into the parking lot. So it's really the idea of inviting people into the site and not closing it off by a hard 90-degree angle.
This is a question completely unrelated to this building, but it's a question that interests me. Within the last four or five months, there have been streetlights with a blue cast to them. Is that something that the city is asking it to do? Is that something that Iowa Lutheran is doing? Why are these, they're interesting and they call attention to the site. What's the story?
I can't answer that. Sorry.
If it's streetlights, I imagine that's just mid-am. They, you know, they're charged with maintaining them. I don't, I'm not aware that we've asked them to do anything unique. It's maybe just a newer light fixture. That's just me speculating.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. You can sign in on that white sheet, please. Any speakers in support in the audience? You're welcome to come up to the podium for five minutes. Seeing none, any speakers in opposition? Welcome to come up for five minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in after you're done.
My name's Jerry Gray. Sorry. And I live directly north on Roosevelt. I am the resident and the owner of the property. And I just had a few concerns. I agree with Unity Point putting this in there. I don't have a problem with it. There's a few things that come to my attention. I do like the plan. I've seen the plan. I like it. The only thing, I had a couple of problems with being on Roosevelt Avenue, which is one block long. It's a small street. I'm afraid they got a walkway going through. If you look, they got a walkway going through, and I'm afraid that employees and patients are gonna be parking on Roosevelt, which will disrupt my garbage, my recycling, and me getting out of my driveway. That's one thing I was looking at. Another one was, I don't know the hours of operation on this. Is it gonna be 24/7? Is it gonna be Monday through Friday? Are they gonna have ambulance since it's urgent care? Is it gonna be flashing lights in the middle of the night, which is gonna be waking me up? Just a few things I had concerns about. I agree with it. I love the outline of it. As long as they don't have an entrance on Roosevelt, they got it on Penn Avenue, which is great, and that's what the zoning is, so... But that is my concerns that I got, is the parking on Roosevelt, my trash pickup, and the 24/7 or what the hours of operations are. But that's what I'd have. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers in opposition? Please come up, state your name and address. You get five minutes and sign in afterwards.
My name is Curtis White, and I'm at 1316 East 9th, which is, will be on the east side of the proposed property. I have been contacted in regards to the alley that separates us, and they need some kind of, I guess I gotta sell my portion of it. And I've contacted them. I got concerned because even as of today, I saw work being done. I said, "We haven't arrived at any agreement to how this issue is gonna be handled with the encroachment on my portion of rights to the said plan there." So I'm concerned that work has been done. I haven't been given a clear specification of how this is gonna be resolved. I did receive a letter suggesting fair market value. I've been in real estate for 30 years. I gave them my proposal. They denied it and then sent me. Now I'm getting caught up between a couple of different entities who were making decisions, whether it be Lutheran or this is a city issue, and it was one other person or entity I can't think of offhand regarding it. I'm just thankful that my neighbor saw me in the driveway and said, "Hey, there's a meeting tonight." And so I didn't bring everything that I would've normally brought to present it, but that's what my concern is for the approval of it. Also, I share the concerns with that Roosevelt Street, Danone Arrow Street. I don't think it's gonna be appropriate to have any parking on that and then still make it accessible, particularly to my neighbor to get out, in and out, and then the large garbage truck that has to come through there to pick up recycling there. It doesn't seem very feasible to have parking on that side. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers in opposition to the request?
Can I make sure I understand what he's asking? Are you saying that there's elements required by this plan that you're saying are still in debate as to whether or not they're controlled by the applicant?
Yeah, they sent me a letter. It says consent to vacate or sell of alley or street right of way.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir. Go ahead.
And they're gonna need my consent to the, for the property that's east of it, between their property and my property, to purchase, or at least get my, me to sign away that right to it.
There's a dead-end segment of alley. There's a portion of the eastern edge of the site. You actually can see where the property line is, but you can see some, you know, see some landscaping that goes beyond the property line. That is a, that's a dead-end segment of alley that's undeveloped. So they're hoping, that's a stormwater area. So as staff, we told them they either need to get all their stormwater on their site or seek vacation of their, of the alley. The normal process for vacating an alley is to get agreement of parties, so they were directed to do that. The city, I mean, we see these alley vacations frequently. I mean, that's something you guys see a lot. So, you know, those are sold at fair market value by our real estate division. They're typically offered half and half. They don't have to be sold that way, but that's what typical. So that's where that's at. I mean, the applicant, I believe, can make all this work without, with only their half of the alley if the gentleman doesn't want to purchase, you know, if we don't vacate the whole thing or sell, if we sell half to him, half to them, they can make it work. That would be, it was just that landscaping, I think, would shift over a little bit.
So whom am I supposed to, to, because I'm willing to sell it. It's just what I...
I mean, you're not selling it. You would have the opportunity to buy your half. Well, you got, it sounds like you got a letter from our city's real estate division, right? Or an email, maybe? Maybe a Cold, Cold Vigs is his last name, perhaps?
He was an attorney. I don't have that letter, but...
Or maybe, well, we asked the applicant to contact you and try to coordinate this on your own, so it'd be a cohesive request. But I thought you said you had a quote for fair market value. I assumed that came from our real estate division, but maybe you're talking about something else in that sense.
Yeah, they, the letter that came suggested that it was, should be sold from them to me for fair market value. We replied with a fair market offer, and then we were referred back to, the city would have to do that.
Okay. So you've not received any letters from our city of Des Moines real estate division?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so I think the applicant is just trying to coordinate with you like we asked them to, just so you could have a joint, you know, application. Either you could buy your half if you wanted to. If you don't want to buy your half, that's fine. They could buy the other half. But this, right now, that's owned by the city of Des Moines. It's public right of way. For anybody to use it for private use, it needs to be sold, it has to be vacated as public right of way and sold, but...
Jason, would you say that for the gentleman's concern, based on the current site plan, they're not touching the alley, correct?
Well, they're showing some landscaping that will just need to slide over, but that's not the point of what's in front of you. The design alternatives are why they're in front of you. We will continue to work with them, the staff, and they'll have to either get the alley part taken care of or adjust their landscaping and stormwater a little bit.
So one second clarification. There's discussion twice on parking on the south side of Roosevelt. Is there parking currently on the south side of Roosevelt, or is that a no-parking street? So would this actually impact?
Well, when I look at the aerial, I see a couple cars parked on the north side of the street, so I'm assuming that there's probably parking on the north and not on the south, but I can do a little Google Street View and check. But I don't, it's a full street. It's public parking right now. They're not showing a driveway accessing Roosevelt. I don't know that, we're not, the staff isn't concerned.
I'm assuming... Okay, I, I'm assuming the next call to make sure we're in the right, with the city of Des Moines real estate, then?
Yeah, well, I don't, I will have, Michael will talk. Michael, do you have the next item too? Okay, Shre Oshie will come outside with you and get your name and contact information, and we'll follow up with you. Maybe she can go into a little greater detail.
Okay.
But you, you know, what we're trying to do and what they're trying to do is to let you know about, you know, there's an opportunity for this, it's unused alley. It's a paper alley. It doesn't, you know, nobody's really using it. So, let's vacate it.
Well, it was news to me because we, when we cut it all down, it was super overgrown. We cut it down with our backyard, so it looks like it's part of our backyard. So, it was news to us that that wasn't a part of it, so we had been taking care of it and attending to it.
Yeah, I think the question for you is, do you want to buy half of it or not?
That would be a change too, because it was proposed to me that they were buying it from me.
Well, maybe they're wanting to do that for you. I don't know. But I can't, that's a private matter.
That's why the help, what you said.
Yeah, but that's a private matter between you and them. What we've asked them to do is to try to sort it out with you as a good neighbor thing. And, but, so, keep your communication open. Shre Oshie will give you her contact information. We'll help you stay involved.
Can we clarify? So, right now, the alley is not owned by anyone but the city.
Right.
This, and in order for this project to use its half of the alley, he has the opportunity to buy his other half.
Right.
If he buys his other half, that does not impact the project here in any way. So, the other, the half that the hospital have, it would still be fine. There's nothing that requires the back of his house.
Right.
And to actually make sure he can own the back of his yard, he just needs to talk to the rest of the city to get, make sure the back of his yard isn't taken over by anyone else and still remains his.
Right, we're only talking about the alley, not property he owns.
Sorry.
Yeah.
The back of where he perceives the end of his yard end, which is in the middle of the alley. Is that, am I clear?
Yeah, I'm just clarifying. But no, that's, you're right. I mean-
So, there is no encroachment on that property, because that's not how it was presented to me. They needed my-
Well, I, well, they, their preference would be to have the whole alley so they could do the landscaping that they're showing in this drawing that's up on the screen. But-
So, there is a preference, but it's not a necessity?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, and therefore, there was the offer to, because I know I, they said fair market value. I gave them what I thought, and then they-
But the city of Des Moines is, whoever buys this first, I mean, we would normally sell it to either party. We're going to, the city's going to charge fair market value. So, they're just trying to tell you that that's going to be the cost of buying it. If they want to buy it, and, you know. Anyway, we're getting into the weeds. Why don't you talk to Shre Oshie? We can follow up with you after the meeting. I mean, tonight, we're, all we're talking about is some design alternatives to how the building sits on the site and how many windows they have and stuff like that. It's nothing related to the alley.
Okay, I'll talk to him.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant does have five minutes for rebuttal.
So, just to clarify a few things for the first gentleman. The clinic's open eight to five, normal business hours. It's not an urgent care. There will not be ambulances going to this site. It's a mental health clinic. So, just to answer his questions. And then, as far as vacating the alleyway, we are only using our half now. We have pulled that back and created a five-foot buffer from the middle of the alleyway, which is also zoning code. So, that's what our intent is to move forward.
I just want to make sure, your intent is to not, to not deal with any of the alley at all?
No, no, we're basically just going to take, well, I think, yes, we're going to, our half.
Your half, okay.
But there's still, from the middle of the alleyway, there's a zoning requirement that requires a five-foot buffer, which we're also adhering to. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Does this plan include the half of the alley?
This plan is dated. This plan is old. It's not showing, it's not showing what we are currently going over. The city will actually receive tomorrow when we deliver documents, hopefully. So.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
I'll move staff.
Have a motion on the floor? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion, any abstentions or?
I think it was, it was-
Okay. Motion passes. The next item on the public hearing agenda is item number three. Request from Watlau Budhabath of Iowa for the following regarding two parcels located in the vicinity of 1806 East Park Avenue. A, determine as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. And B, to rezone approximately the northernmost 50 feet of the two parcels from N3A Neighborhood District to P2 Public Civic and Institutional District to allow for the construction of an open-air accessory building for meditation and other uses associated with assembly place of worship. I believe Michael will be presenting on behalf of staff.
Good evening again, chair, members of the commission. This request is coming in from the property owners to the north. They also do own the properties to the south. They are proposing to construct a 3,200 square foot open-air accessory building for meditation uses. This will be accessory to the current assembly and worship uses on the northern parcel here. This parcel where my cursor is at right now is zone P2, which allows for this assembly and worship use. They're requesting to rezone this section down here on the southern portion, approximately 2.28 acres, 12,800, 12,083 square feet from this N3A use or N3A zoning district to a P2 district. Here is just a general sketch showing where they're proposing this outbuilding. It's going to cross property lines, and that's what's triggering this rezoning for them to complete this building onto the southern parcel. The parcels on the southern side are currently one-house residential. I believe they're rental units, but they'll continue to be rental units. Here's some existing site photos right now of the area. There's an existing tennis court, but it's mostly just vacant grass space. And here's another sketch just showing their overall site area and the proposed accessory building here on the south end crossing the property lines. They're proposing basically approximately around 50 feet to the south. That's what we had discussions with when they described the area that they needed for this proposed building. Staff believes the proposed use is in conformance with what we've seen here. Sorry. It's going to be accessory to- Is it the metal? Sorry. Hopefully, that works. So, the proposed rezoning is to allow for this accessory use that's going to be in conformance with the use that's currently going on. It's pretty low impact. It's just going to continue the uses for the assembly and worship space to the north. There won't be any significant impacts to the surrounding properties, just from what's been presented in the scope with the rezoning application. Just to provide some additional context on why they're asking for this relief for the position of the building, there is an existing stormwater line that runs north from the south across their property line where the existing tennis court is right now. So, they have this small portion of land where they can build it. They have to be about 15 feet off of that sanitary line, and no structures can be on top of that. Anything that's going to be built here, if the rezoning is approved, has to conform with all our site plan requirements and all conformance requirements for the property. That being said, staff does recommend the request of P2 district be found in conformance with the existing Plan DSM future land use designation of low-dead city residential. And staff also recommends approval of the request of rezoning from N3A Neighborhood District to P2 Public Civic and Institutional District, subject to the condition that the subject property shall be combined with the property adjacent to the north in accordance with the plot of survey. So, basically, just requiring a plot of survey to reestablish these, or establish these legal law lines and have it all in one contiguous parcel. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting. Focus in here, just so the commission can read this. Basically, just a description of what they went through with their public meeting. And just another document that was handed out with our neighborhood. And these were the documents that were provided also. We did not receive any notice comments for this proposed rezoning. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? We say open-air buildings, so it's really just a roof?
From what I understand, yes. These sheets up here kind of give the full, kind of almost like a gazebo structure.
I guess that's my question, like, what would make it a building versus a gazebo? If it was a gazebo, would we still have the same issue? If it was temporary, would we have the issue? Like, what caused this to be? Is it just because it's permanent? Like, what's the-
It's a permanent structure, and it's expanding the use to the south from the P2 district that would allow these accessory structures for the assembly and worship use. And they're expanding into the single household residential properties to the south. So, any expansion of that use in the south triggers the need for them to rezone the land that the buildings can be located on.
Any other questions? If not, I will invite the applicant to present. Thanks, Michael. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Tim Hilkema, TH2 Architecture and Planning here in Des Moines, 1405 Southeast First, Number 107. I'm here representing the Buddhist temple this evening, just in, well, just to explain what, if we needed to do that. This building, one of the biggest things that they're due at the temple is that this, they have a festival in June. One of the, one of the pieces of this, and I don't think I ever really necessarily explained it to the, to them, Shre Oshie, but that this is where, that's where they make much of their money, is at this Buddhist festival, which is in June. In the past, what has happened, one of the things that's happened is that if it rains, they lose out to be, to, and the, out of the tents that are there, the portable tents and stuff that are there are, are, you get rained out. You get muddy. They don't have anything permanent there. They don't have anything with the concrete. So, that's one of the reasons what's, why this has gone that way. They also do some education and then the meditation and different things like that. So, education purposes, they, they, they could have outdoor education in an area that would provide them with more, with more room. So, the reason why it's located in the way it is is to, is because of how the campus is laid out. If anybody has been there, and I'd suggest, it's a, it's a pleasing campus when you come through it. Very colorful. The road on the, what is the west, but on the upper side here, is something that it opens up to you. Opens up to you and starts seeing the Sala, which is their worship center. The monks' residence is then just out below that, and we've got some nice, probably monastery, what you would call it, prayer room, was on the far north, and a shrine, beautiful shrine, that's, that's right there in the center. Southern building that it's by, straight, straight east, is another accessory type building, but it is not open to the public, or it's not open to air. So, that's one of the biggest reasons. They wanted to keep it open. That's part of their belief system too, is to keep things open and calm and meditative. So, that, that's where they really, they struggled with how to do, how to do that. And this is where they've really, really wanted to come through. So, there's actually, interesting fact, those are not tennis courts. They're actually what I would call foot volleyball. I don't have the exact, but if you've ever seen that, that is what that's there. We'd invite anybody to come to us, come in June 2024, or 20 through the 23rd, or something like that, about the third weekend in June. So, I think that, that explains what it is. Oh, the one thing I'd like to mention is that, yeah, they do own the properties to the south. One of those properties is rental units. The other two are used for purposes of the temple itself. One would be if they had, one would be their own personal Airbnb. They come, if families come in for funerals, if they come in for festivals, if they come in for something, that, that they can provide that service to them. And then they, they also use, and actually, in both of those units. One was rental. It is now being, well, two of them were rental. Now, it's just going to be one. And they're transforming that into something that they would use in the same manner as, as their Airbnb. So, that, we, we kept it back. We didn't want to rezone the whole property because we understand that the, that the street on the south is a residential street. And this happens to be, you know, a nice, nice campus, peaceful campus towards the back. So, we, we hope that we appease the neighbors with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Are there any speakers in support of this item? Seeing none. Are there any speakers in opposition? Please make your way to the podium. You have five minutes. State your name and address and sign in afterwards.
Actually, I'm not in opposition of the temple building or anything, but it's going to have a roof over it. And is it going to be where the drainage is all we're worried about as far as, because we're down, down to the east of it. And if that water comes down through there, it makes, it just, it's a river going through those properties on 1836 and-
Sir, can you say your name and address?
1836 Southeast Park Avenue.
Your name?
I'm George Fertz.
Thank you.
And that's, that's basically all we're concerned about is the drainage. If it could drain north, you know, from that roof line, wouldn't be a problem. But if it's going to drain east, then it will hit, hit all those properties on East Park all the way down because there's kind of like a little swell or ravine from through there. All them properties will have water that goes in right through the back door. Because all the, the properties that are biattached, the kind of duplex, they're outside, their back door is below grade. So, all that water that would come from that temple down, if it's drained that way, will come right in the back door of everybody's property. That's all, that's all we're concerned about. So, if they can adjust that, run the water to the north, it'd be fine.
Thank you. Please sign in. We'll have the applicant take the opportunity for any information regarding the the stormwater and your concerns.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else in opposition to this project that would like to speak? Anyone neutral? If not, I will invite the applicant for a rebuttal. You may have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Right now, we don't- Right now, we don't view this, this is a rather flat area, and we believe that we could sheet drain it off. We're going to be going through the site plan approval process with this. So we will definitely take another look at that. We'll see once what that is and have staff look at that at that time. If we need to, if we need to provide a retention basin of some sort there, we will abide. They've been very open, like my clients have been very open to whatever, whatever they've needed to do to try to take care of this, so.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and we'll hear from the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the neighbor. Have you read the agenda item and the staff recommendation here? Yeah, you. I ask because it says here, "Any future construction or redevelopment of the subject properties must comply with all applicable site plan and design regulations contained in the planning and design ordinance chapter and so forth." And that's what the developer has just agreed upon. Do you see that language there? I'll give you my copy.
They may have only had the agenda.
Oh, I see. It's, it's...
Staff recommendation, I think we have some, should we have some at the door, right? We'll just get you a copy.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Or Michael's got it. There we go.
Just for clarification purposes, we're dealing with the rezoning, but the applicant will still have to come through with a site plan for the proposed structure, at which time some of the stormwater concerns will be taken into consideration by our staff. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, motions?
Because if there is a stormwater issue, right, that isn't really addressed here. And even if there is one that currently exists, we'd only be concerned about impacts that make it worse, wouldn't we? The same stormwater issue would still exist at the planned thing, wouldn't it?
Yeah, they're not going to be required to fix current problems. It's going to be a matter of taking care of whatever they might be adding to.
So his concerns could be valid. I'm just saying that, you know, even with the language there, if there's a problem, the next round isn't fixing it.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you if there's a problem. There could be a problem that exists today, but the project shouldn't add to that, that will not be looked at to maintain status quo.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood. I'd move staff on this.
We have a motion. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry? Yes. We have a motion on the floor to move staff. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And you opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item number five, a request from Heard Ingersoll LLC for the following regarding parcels located in the vicinity of 3121 Ingersoll Avenue and 3111 Ingersoll Avenue. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. B, amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use, the future land use classification of the property from neighborhood mixed use and low density residential within a community node to community mixed use within a community node. And C, to rezone the northwest portion of the site from RX1 mixed use district to MX2 mixed use district and rezone the northernmost parcel from N5 neighborhood district to RX1 mixed use district to allow development of a mixed use building, a multi, multiple household building and row home buildings. Suryoshi will be presenting from staff.
Thank you, Chair. Suryoshi Chakrabarti, planning staff. I will be giving you a presentation on this rezoning request, which is located in the vicinity of 31st Street and Ingersoll Avenue. The applicant is proposing a large mixed use project, and that requires rezoning of certain portions of the larger project site, which is about 2.7 acres. And so the discussion today is to rezone the property to be able to allow permitted uses, certain uses that are being proposed as part of the mixed use project. So this is the subject area. Just wanted to familiarize you with the area here. This is Ingersoll Avenue. This is 31st Street. As you can see, the rezoning boundary is a little, it's a little bit wonky. It's because there's a variety of uses that are being proposed, and we're trying to accommodate the various uses that the applicant has proposed as part of the mixed use project. This is the existing zoning. The subject site is this entire area, roughly 2.7 acres. The area that fronts Ingersoll is currently zoned MX2. The areas, the parcels to the north are zoned RX1. And then there's a single family zoned lot to the north as well. So in order to, in order to make the various uses compatible and fit with what's being proposed, there is a proposal to rezone portions of it. And I have another drawing here which shows this a little bit, with a little bit more clarity. So the portion that's RX1 is now being proposed to be rezoned to MX2 in order to allow a multiple household building, an apartment building. And then the portion, that single family up here, which is currently N5, is being proposed to be zoned RX1. And that should, in coordination with this area that's fronting 31st Street, be RX1, which should allow row home building, six row home buildings that front 31st Street. So I can come back to this if you have more questions, but I just wanted to go through the, kind of the rezoning areas and the portions of the, of the subject area that we are rezoning to the, to the different district. Before I move to the various uses that are proposed, I have some pictures to give you a context of the site. It's currently vacant and I'm, I've taken this picture from the property to the west. As you can see, the land slopes down further north. This is 31st Street right here. There's low density and mostly a variety of single family and other residential uses to the north. This is looking south. Again, this is currently a commercial building that's under construction adjacent to the property. This is the intersection of 31st Street and Ingersoll Avenue. It's a busy corridor, mostly commercial in nature along Ingersoll with more low density residential to the north and mix of higher density residential to the south. Another view, this is from Ingersoll looking north. Currently, the property is undeveloped, but you can see this is the high, higher elevation and its slopes as you move further north. This is a concept sketch that the applicant provided with the rezoning. There's a few different things going on, and I'm going to go over each of those. This building, where you can see my cursor right here, fronting Ingersoll, this is a mixed use building. It's proposed to be three stories in height. There's surface parking lot to the back. There's a driveway that is expected to come off of Ingersoll. This building that you see laid out right here is the multiple household or apartment building. That is the, one of the residential components of the, of the proposal. It is expected to have about 52 units. There is going to be multi-level, two-level underground parking underneath the building. And as you move further north, there is a drive access that comes off of 31st Street and moves further north. There are six row homes that are proposed right here along fronting 31st Street. So if you can look at the entire site, you can break it out into the mixed use component and the residential component. The residential component consists of a total of 58 dwelling units. 52 of those are in the, in the apartment building, which is four-story high. And then the other six units are the row homes that are fronting 31st Street. And the mixed use component would be the three-story building that's right here. So in summary, to recap, that is what is being proposed here, and that is the general layout. The applicant can go a little bit further into the design details and what they're envisioning, but I just wanted to give you a brief summary on that. The applicant also provided a rendering. Again, please keep in mind that this is a rezoning and the design, the actual placement of the various improvements, including driveways and buildings and other site improvements and the building design is, will only be finalized after site plan is submitted. At this point, it's very conceptual, but it is just to give you kind of an idea of what it could potentially look like. So I will just scan through these so you can get a feel for what the applicant is envisioning for this particular location project. With that, I'm going to move to staff rationale and what staff believes in terms of the rezoning request. We do feel that the rezoning request is, does conform to the land use, the future land use and the development pattern in this area, the character of the neighborhood, the nature of the growth along Ingersoll and the densities and the types of uses that are envisioned for this corridor. The proposed development as presented does conform to that. Therefore, staff is supportive of the rezoning request and, and the permitted uses that are allowed as a result of the various zoning district. There's just a few things that we, that I wanted to note about the design. Since there is three different building types here, the mixed use building and the apartment building need to conform to a certain building type and needs to meet the design requirements for that. The row houses need to conform to the row building type. Currently, the concept that the applicant has submitted shows the row homes to be about two stories in height, but they have to be, they have to be occupied space. They cannot just be two-story high. They have to be two-story. The levels have to be occupied spaces. The concept that was presented to staff right now seems like doesn't meet that. So we did want to point that, and we would, we would hope that the applicant will go back and when, when it comes to the final design and the site plan submitted, that is something that they will keep in mind, otherwise that will require a waiver. However, with, to fit the character of the area, we do think that the applicant should comply with, with the requirements of the various building types within those districts. As far as transportation is concerned, there is an access off of Ingersoll Avenue. While it's preferred not to have an access off of a primary street like Ingersoll, we do understand that there are quite a few challenges with this site. There is the grade issue, there's a few different uses, and there is an existing sanitary sewer line that runs through part of the property. So there are a few challenges that make it difficult for the applicant to be able to utilize just one access off of 31st Street. However, as, with the site plan process, there, there is an opportunity to look at accesses, and if there's opportunity to have shared accesses, those need to be explored in order to ensure that, that the requirements of Chapter 135 are met, as well as goals of our comprehensive plan and Vision Zero Plan are met as well, to the best extent possible. This is a very walkable neighborhood with very easy access to DART transit route. There's a sidewalk, there's a proposed cycle track and an existing bike lane. Therefore, there is an opportunity to be able to leverage that multimodal aspect of this neighborhood. With that, staff is supportive of this request and request that the, that the property be, portions of the property be rezoned from RX1 to MX2 and the northernmost parcel be rezoned from N5 neighborhood district to RX1 mixed use district in order to allow the proposed uses. This would also require a amendment to the future land use designation from neighborhood mixed use and low density residential within a community node to a community mixed use designation within a community node. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting. There was several members of the public who were in attendance. Here is a sign in sheet. And they also provided a detailed summary. I will let you all scan through this. The concerns were identified and some of the responses of the applicant are also articulated here, but some of the major areas of discussion included things like traffic, the entrance on Ingersoll, the architecture and design of the buildings as shown in the renderings, landscaping and screening to the residential areas to the north, as well as lighting. And I'm, I can come back to these if you would like me to. The applicant also provided some context of the architectural elements of the, of the north of Grand Neighborhood and highlighted some of those for reference in their, in their neighborhood meeting information. And these are some of the comments that were received from the attendees of the neighborhood meeting. We received a couple comment cards. This is undecided, and again, I'll let you scan through this really quickly. We also received a couple letters from Des Moines residents, and I'll let you read through these as well. And I'm happy to come back to these if you would like me to. This is another email that we received from a resident. This is the consent map. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Shreyoshi, I have a quick comment, maybe a question. It's very likely that we will see the site plan in front of us at some point, based on the staff report.
It depends on the design. It's very conceptual in nature right now. The conceptual elevations that were provided to staff indicated, at least for the row building, it appeared like they might need a waiver if they do not change their design. So that could come. However, that is up to the applicant. If they are meeting all the requirements of the building types for those districts, then they may not need to. So it just depends on how the site planning process goes and if the applicant is needing to seek any waivers.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the staff recommendation. You're in full agreement with the applicant, is that right?
That is correct. So I'll go back to the staff recommendation.
Maybe I'm just reading it wrong. It says "found not in conformance." Am I reading?
Well, that's the land use, the multiple-step process we have to go through. The northern portion of this property is, on the future land use map, is shown as neighborhood mixed-use.
Okay, so that's what we're doing.
And the southern half of it along Ingersoll is community mixed-use. Yeah, so it's just that north half. Yep.
I have a question. Shreyoshi, just to clarify, are the curb cuts a potential waiver that will be needed, or would that be in compliance with city code?
That would...I don't know. I don't have the answer to that question. I know that the general policy is that whenever possible, the accesses have to come off of a non-primary street. That being said, I think staff does take into consideration limitations, and Jason, you can correct me if I misspeaking, but...
No, I think you're spot-on. I mean, there is preference in the design standards, you know, to come off a side street. They have one side street that they actually front. So they're already showing a driveway off of that. As Shreyoshi noted earlier on in the presentation, there are great challenges to having everything come off of that side street. So I think what, you know, was also mentioned, and I think maybe was discussed at the neighborhood meeting, is they might have an opportunity to talk to some neighbors to the west about shared access or cross-access easements. We'd like them to explore that. But flat out, the driveway off of Ingersoll wouldn't necessarily take a type 2. It may not be something that comes before you.
Okay, I was just curious, because it does seem like most of the concerns are around traffic and safety around that area, so just the potential of that.
Yeah, and I think there's two things. There's the concern about impacts of 31st Street, and then I think separate from that is just the number of driveways on Ingersoll. I will note that right now, you know, this has dried it up into multiple properties, so there has been historically two curb cuts where we would just show one now, so...
And if they were to have two, if they were to propose two accesses off Ingersoll, that would definitely need a waiver.
Two questions. First, is the number of accidents cited, which sounds like it's averaging one per month, is that accurate? And if it's accurate, would that basically cause an engineerially mandatory lighted crosswalk?
We haven't analyzed the crash numbers. I think that would be something that would have to be studied to see if it warrants, if it meets the warrants for a lighted crosswalk, like...
Are you referencing, like, in a neighbor comment?
Yeah, I'm just curious if there actually are three accidents that actually would rise to a level where the mud says that you actually do need to have a lighted crosswalk there.
Yeah, we don't have that information.
So second question, we're just doing with zoning, which is what we're doing tonight. There is like a wonky trapezoid there on 614, which I wonder if, like, let's, hopefully this project is awesome, seems like it's awesome, hopefully it goes on forever, building's there forever. But if it isn't, it seems like you're left with some oddly wonky trapezoid there in 614. Is there reason not to make it actually square, as per normal? And if it were square, would that also force this project to come back later, since you'd be crossing uses?
That's a good question. I think one of the challenges that the applicant was facing, and as you see the placement of the building, there is, I don't have the utility layer here, but there's an existing sanitary sewer line that runs about kind of a diagonal angle through the property. And they have to leave any easement, and there can't be any structures on it. So that is the reason, that is the primary reason why the building placement has to be that way. That being said, the zoning districts that have been proposed here, MX2, is appropriate in terms of the land use in that area and the development pattern. So it still makes sense in the context of that.
I think I'm in a different place. Is it possible to actually look at the plots as a function of the proposed zoning? And I'm talking about 614, which is along 13th, right? Ooh, yeah, awesome, sweet. So bottom right corner, we've got this wonky trapezoid, so the bottom-bottom one, fully in. Next one, I'm cutting like a weird curve on it, and then I'm on a straight line. Yep, there. So I look at that straight line, if I just took that straight down.
Go back to their concept.
Well, but instead of that J, like, let's say this whole thing burns down and back to a clear place. I'm now left with like, a bunch of squares and one wonky S curve.
Right. And worst-case scenario, they'd have to come in to rezone, to shave it off. I think this drawing helps a little bit in the sense that the zoning line that's being proposed is the center line of what's anticipated to be the parking lot. And then also on this drawing, you can see where that sewer easement comes through, so it's right through, if you zoom in, it's on the drawing.
I get the drawing. I'm just trying to figure out how we kill two birds with one stone. Or if we go back to the other plot for a minute, if we were to just drop that line straight down, does it not protect future use of that plot to make it not weird? And number two, does it also force us to actually have to review this again, even if they only have one curb cut or anything else?
No, the change in adding area to the zoning boundary, the only thing that does is force us to continue this and re-notify and start over again, so that would delay the project. I mean, you're trying to head off a potential delay down the road, but you would cause the delay now, because we haven't noticed for that if we add area. Is that what you're saying, to just pull that up a little bit north so you come across in a straight line?
I think pull the eastern boundary straight south, so you end up with an actual rectangle or instead of a half circle.
Go back to the, not to draw this out, but go back to the site drawing. And then zoom into the driveway part. I know, but I just want to see how that actually relates to what's on the ground.
You would basically have, part of that bottom 614 would include part of that driveway. I don't know whether it would include part of the building.
Right. So we're trying to avoid getting the building or any parking associated with the building in the RX zoning district. We want to keep that in MX, so...
Based on the engagement of the neighbors already at this stage, I think we're going to be seeing this again, right? Because it'll come to us if enough neighbors are concerned.
Only if the designs require design alternative. But let's, we haven't even gotten past the staff presentation, so why don't we let the applicant come up? Let's hear the public, and then...
Thanks, Shreyoshi. With that, I will invite the applicant to the podium. Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes. Sign in afterwards.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Ben Landhauser, I'm the Executive Vice President with Lifestyle Communities. We're at 4938 Lincoln Drive in Edina, Minnesota. Appreciate the dialogue leading up to this through staff report and even the couple of questions that are already raised. I'll try to hit some of those as I go through this presentation. Hopefully give a better idea of what the uses are that we're proposing, and I'll try to not duplicate what Shreyoshi already presented during her review of our proposal. So as was discussed, we kind of have two different projects in our mind of what we're proposing in this redevelopment project. One is actually a cooperative housing development, so I know is referred to as an apartment building for the multi-story or multifamily building. We are looking at both the multifamily building and the row home being kind of one and the same, just living in two different building types and structures. So the 52 units proposed in the main, kind of traditional multifamily building, house all of the amenity spaces we typically do in cooperative developments that we've been part of. And then the unique opportunity to do some townhomes, similar to what Shreyoshi identified in terms of the topography on the site, really necessitated us thinking a little bit differently and acting a little bit differently on how we use kind of the northeast portion of this site, not as a continuation of that traditional multifamily building, but more as this row home opportunity. We do have buyers that come to us that are often looking to downsize. They're looking for access to amenities that they can't bring themselves past this idea that they're sharing more than a single wall or two walls with other neighbors. So what this opportunity allows is at least six individuals would have the opportunity for kind of single-level living in their own space, probably similar to a single-family home that they're currently living in or a townhome, but now they have access to the general amenities in the main building. I'll talk a little bit more about the cooperative model here in a minute. The mixed-use building, selfishly, just again with the uniqueness of this site, this is kind of up our alley of being in a very walkable, desirable, existing neighborhood that's very walkable, has a lot of amenities, you know, access to goods and services that don't require getting in a car to travel and get those things. So it's great for us. The mixed-use building is really a byproduct of us looking to kind of plant a flag, so to speak, in the state of Iowa, specifically in Des Moines, of having our own office and really looking at kind of the design requirements along this Ingersoll corridor and leveraging the opportunity with the number of interests we've already seen in either restaurateurs or, you know, small clinics or practitioners, looking for additional space along this corridor. For us, it's a win-win that we can put kind of an office on the upper floor of this building and then drive and help meet some of the other demand that's out there to really continue to revitalize Ingersoll Avenue, as has happened further to the east of our site. I know Shreyoshi shared this project, but again, I think it gives a reasonable idea of just the complexities that we're dealing with, our project. I'm going to go into more depth on kind of the cooperative here really quick. So a little bit about our company. By and large, this is what we do as cooperative housing development, principally developed in and around the Twin Cities metropolitan, in Minnesota, greater Minnesota areas, as well as some in Wisconsin and Michigan. This being our first venture into the state of Iowa. I guess if you're not aware already, there are other cooperatives in the Des Moines metro specifically. The closest one to this site would actually be in Beverdale. It's called the Vintage Cooperative in Beverdale. Similar financial model, and if I talk through kind of the uniqueness, what the cooperative housing is compared to a condominium, so this is an owner-occupied option for people just seeking a slightly different financial reality of how they get there. Instead of individual mortgages that would be commonplace in a condominium, we're dealing with a singular master mortgage. And then our cooperative model has shareholders. That's your right of ownership in this particular structure. So everyone that is a shareholder has exclusive rights to Unit 101, 304, 806, whatever those actual units are within the building. And then they have full access, they're a proportionate owner, so in this case, 1/58 owner of all the amenities, the sites, the grounds. So again, even though we have two different building types, this really feels like one unique community. We pride ourselves on looking for opportunities like this, being a little bit more boutique in size, where others that develop cooperatives are typically in kind of the 80s to 100 units at a swatch. We like, again, these more intimate redevelopment opportunities where we're going to be in that probably 50 to 60 unit range, allows everyone to know each other. And then we have a lot of like-mindedness. So this is appealing to a particular age bracket, depending on how this particular location would end up being financed. We either get an insured mortgage that allows us to 40 years at a really low rate, and we would require then the minimum age of any of those shareholders to be 62. If we did traditional financing, similar to the Beverdale option that I mentioned, we could do a 30-year mortgage, but it would allow us to drop that age minimum or age qualification down to 55. So we've done it both ways. We're looking at the opportunity here of seeing what best fits this market, since there aren't a plentiful number of cooperatives to make this available to more people. This is a limited equity cooperative, so there are things about that structure where we avoid things that condominiums often do, where you have some people that own 100% of their space and some that own a smaller percentage of that. In this model, we basically have everyone participates in that master mortgage. We also have replacement reserves, so we touch replacement, not just in those common-area amenities, but we're also touching flooring, appliances, things that need replenished. So 20, 30 years down the road, you don't have the one unit that's been continually invested in by a particular owner and others that have maybe not kept up to that same level of refresh. We talked specifically more about this model, so included with the information that went into materials submitted to you. We do have wellness studios in our buildings, we have great rooms, hospitality suites, kind of a game room, we do maker spaces. Basically, everything people that are moving into our cooperatives would have done in their previous residence, we're augmenting so that their private residence, kind of that exclusive right to the unit that they occupy themselves, doesn't have to be as large, even though we have unit sizes in this building, as it's been contemplated from 1,000 to about 1,800 square feet. We still have people that are probably downsizing from 2,000 or 3,000 square feet, or they have a basement that gave them flexibility to do other things that our amenity spaces augment in this case. As was mentioned before, and I think some of the renderings start to give you a hint at what our challenge has been for that main building in particular. We have roughly 22 to 26 feet of elevation change from south going north across the property. So what that allowed us to do is, instead of doing a single level of lower garage, we basically did two smaller levels of garage, kept that main building footprint tighter. We tried to hug away from the northern extents of the boundaries, one, just to not be up against the existing residential to the north, but also just to keep that framework. So again, we deal with people that are looking to downsize and not feel like they're moving into a building of 800 people. If we can keep that unit count on any given floor somewhere around that 12 to 14 units a floor, very comfortable for people, attractive, and it feels like you do, in fact, have an opportunity to know everyone in that space. We do have 79, excuse me, enclosed parking spaces in those two levels of garage, so our ratio is right around that 1.5, 2 to 1 ratio. In previous or other locations that we have developed similar to this, highly walkable, we have a lot of people that probably bike, or they would be able to walk to the grocery store or go to a restaurant. This ratio works really well for us. In more traditional suburban locations, we might look closer to that 1.6 or 1.7 to 1 ratio, just within that enclosed parking condition. And then similarly, the row building, and I appreciate the comments about that row building need to have occupied space potentially in that upper floor. With our targeted demographic that we'd serve, we might be looking for that waiver. We're going to explore kind of what maybe a lofted space or a bonus room up above looks like. The intent of the existing design was one to make sure that we could fit what we wanted to on the property and meet all of the city's requirements. The one thing that we obviously did not do yet is just demonstrate how that upper space in a townhome or a row home unit might work well for our desired buyers. And then just a couple renderings, again, that were previously shared. So the mixed-use building, and again, this one is good intentions. I think staff did an excellent job identifying kind of what was included in this proposal. As was noted, if you saw it in some of the comments submitted after the neighborhood meeting, we did have the opportunity to meet with the adjacent property owner to the west. Did talk with that. Did talk with that individual, even this last week. We're already evaluating, just from an elevation and topography standpoint, can we tie their north parking lot into being the primary or singular access point into this parking lot that serves only this mixed-use building? Feel pretty good about that being an opportunity. We have a few other things that we need to ratify and demonstrate to that property owner, but our objective would be, if we can, to not have an access off Ingersoll. For a number of reasons, it feels more private. It also opens up Ingersoll to be kind of that multimodal asset that the city is really invested in further to the east of this property. So, that's our objective. If we 100% get there, I don't know, but that's our objective as of right now. I'd also love to free up kind of what currently is shown as that 26-foot-wide paving corridor between our buildings and make that a little bit more green, a little bit more pedestrian-focused, so it could be a win-win for everybody, providing that we can get there with the adjacent property owner. And then a couple renderings again. Designed right now to be three stories in height, we have a lot of interest from kind of the restaurant end of the spectrum, which is kind of happening further east and west along Ingersoll, so we feel really positive about that. We do have designed a mezzanine floor right now, you know, if restaurants or something that generates more traffic or needs more parking doesn't work for some reason, we have flexibility that this could potentially be all office. Smaller office building at that, but still, we're trying to make sure that we're being smart and proactive on anticipating where some of those demands and kind of market realities are for this particular project. And then I do have it, hopefully it's a little bit easier to read, most of the neighborhood concern relative to traffic, surprisingly, and most of them even admitted, it's not really around even the High Street, 31st Street intersection, which is close to where our cooperative developments access is. It really has to do with existing conditions and experiences either at Woodland and 31st or 29th and Woodland. A lot of them, I think as we talk more about it, the fact that we do have that row home building, the setback from 31st is a little bit tighter than the existing residential properties further to the north, that can act as some kind of traffic calming. I don't know that we're going to be like the solve-all of some of the issues that are proposed or were discussed around Woodland, but we're at least aware of it. We appreciate being part of the dialogue, and if there are things that we can do that are reasonable to help accommodate or mitigate some of the traffic, I think we're open to that. The other thing, just practical reality of the timing of our application and the Chase Bank being under construction, that construction of Chase Bank took away a right turn lane, so existing conditions in around 31st Street, a little bit more backed up, just because there's one less lane to get people home or to work or wherever they're going along Ingersoll Avenue as well. So, when that bank opens up, I think most of them in dialogue did acknowledge that's kind of a temporary condition for the time being, it's just maybe gone on longer than they would prefer to see happen. The Ingersoll access, I kind of hit it on that, every reason that would be brought up of why the Ingersoll access point maybe isn't the best fit here, again, as I acknowledged, we're open to looking into that further. Architecture, what Shreyoshi showed that I put together as the exhibit of kind of surrounding neighborhood architecture was an attempt, post that neighborhood meeting, of explaining why we have some of the design characteristics that we do. Are we open to exploring kind of additional things that would be more complimentary to the existing architecture of the neighborhood? Of course, but I think it's only fair to say, our expectation is, we typically do flat roofs. We're trying to make, again, these two building types of the cooperative development look similar, because they're related, they're one in the same. We do pitch roof on one, we'd want to do it on the other, and it just may not be the best overall fit for the project. So, I think we'll continue to be open and explore opportunities of being more complimentary moving forward, but that was one of the concerns that was brought up.
Ben, we have exceeded the 10 minutes, so I just want to have a few seconds to wrap up. I know there will be a lot of questions, so.
Totally fine, I appreciate that, and I'll be really quick. So, landscaping and screening, at this stage, as you're well aware, we're not at a detailed landscape plan. We'll have those things, but we have good intentions there. And then lighting, we're super cautious of how lighting is done in our property, because it's owner-occupied. People that buy from us don't want to see light streaming through their windows at night when they're trying to sleep, so we'll be intentional about that moving forward. And again, if there's anything I didn't cover in this presentation, appreciate the time, but happy to answer any of those.
Thank you.
Time for questions from the commission? For the applicant?
Question, please. I was impressed with your concern for 31st Street and the Woodland intersection and the whole question of traffic and so forth in this densely upbuilt neighborhood. Although, according to the city recommendation, a traffic study is not required for this area, because of your concerns for traffic, would you be willing to request a traffic study from the city?
I would definitely be open to thinking about it. Just understanding if I was to request a traffic study from the city, depending on the findings of those, just be curious what the expectation is on outcomes.
I would be, I mean, the city's traffic studies are largely looking at, and it's not, I mean, it's the developers pay for the traffic study, it's just you have to go through our process. And this development doesn't have enough, you know, units and activity or trip generation to warrant a traffic study in accordance with the city's policies for traffic studies. But they're, my, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but my recollection or thoughts on them is, I think they're largely looking at the network around the use and thinking about the numbers of vehicles coming and going, and, you know, like, is a turn lane needed? Do we need a deceleration lane? They're not going to get into, well, there's, you know, a couple blocks away, there's an issue, what should be done there? There wouldn't be a, as the applicants noted, it occurs today. It's not really a nexus to your development. There isn't a nexus that would, in that traffic study framework, so.
Well, then, Jason, is there something else that the city can do to give us, us and also residents more, you know, notion of appropriateness, of security, of, in terms of all this traffic that is going on?
Yeah, well, I think anytime, you know, regardless, I mean, it's always interesting, I mean, these concerns and things are, you know, happen and people just kind of just see it, and then we have a development project, and then, you know, everybody starts thinking about it and brings it up at these meetings, but people shouldn't wait for a development project if they have, you know, concerns. They should reach out and talk to the, you know, Traffic and Transportation Division. I know, you know, we have Jeff Wiggins, probably many people know, you know, goes to the different neighborhood meetings, has worked a lot on Woodland Avenue with the Woodland Heights neighborhood to the east of here, hearing their concerns. So, the staff is there regardless of whether or not we have a development project.
Would the developer then be willing to talk with Traffic and Transportation, Mr. Wiggins, I think he's the director of the department, about concerns that we've heard from neighborhoods in terms of traffic in the area?
Sure.
Yeah, and we can share.
And to help inform what our use typically does, because we've been through traffic studies on other projects, so we can help identify how our use can be informed towards a model that represents future conditions once we were open.
You did a good job of documenting what you heard, so we will share the summary of that input with the Traffic and Transportation staff.
Sounds good.
I believe our Traffic and Transportation staff will also be taking a closer look at this once the site plan is in for review as well.
Do you anticipate the question of financial assistance?
No. No, I do not.
No taxes paid?
No.
I think a lot of the traffic concerns, especially about the area, for that's where it's actually, it's going to work. By the fact that part of the street is built by 31st, it's a project, you know, like, years ago, and the intersection of 31st and Ingersoll, everything's like a big, it's large enough that people are extremely loud, 31st and Ingersoll, and then they want to dodge, the traffic backs up in Ingersoll, they want to dodge, and the traffic, the iceland is playing, it looks like you got two floors under that park.
Correct.
All of that except for the 31st?
That's correct.
That's 54th, how many parks missing?
Well, in total, if you add in the townhomes, the row home units, we're at 58.
That's going to be the issue, I think.
Yep.
I think it's great, I think, that's the goal we're after, we don't want people to be in a park, we don't want them to be nearby, but that's going to be the issue. And I think the city is going back to real approach. That's a lot of traffic that has been, maybe a right turn only on 31st, but it's just a super difficult site, we've been sitting with for a long time. Glad to have a development plan for it, and John was a part of it.
Any other commissioners, comments, questions?
Seeing none, I will be asking for any audience members who would like to speak in support. You have five minutes. Please come up, state your name and address, and then sign in afterwards.
Hello, my name is Lauren Koloff. I'm the executive director of the Avenues of Ingersoll and Grand. If you're not familiar, we're a Smith District, a nonprofit that provides economic development, marketing and promotion, enhanced maintenance and beautification of the commercial, cultural and residential districts. So, my office is 55828th Street, but I also happen to be a neighbor of this project. I live at 66433rd Street, so just about two blocks from this proposed development. So, I was very excited personally and professionally to see plans for this proposed development on the lot that has sat vacant for quite some time. So, I am here this evening to voice support for this rezoning request. Approving this request will allow these parcels to be developed to their greatest potential, bring in new residents to our corridor, and contribute to their urban revitalization that we've seen already in our district. So, as I'm sure you all know, Ingersoll Avenue has seen tens of millions of dollars of public and private investment in the past decade alone, and this project would only add to that momentum. One of the biggest investments has been in our streetscape, which aims to create a safer, more walkable and vibrant district that welcomes pedestrians, transit riders and cyclists alike. It's the first of its kind in the city of Des Moines. Ingersoll is also home to incredible business community, as well with great restaurants, grocery store, easy access to services and local retailers, all within walking distance along our beautiful streetscape. I think the fact that lifestyle communities chose Ingersoll as the site for their development is a testament to the investments that have been made along the corridor. They see Ingersoll as a place where their residents will want to live for years to come, and I know I'm biased, but I think you made the right choice. I love living right off Ingersoll in walking distance to all these great things. So, I believe that the residents of this development will be great additions to the neighborhood, they will be eager to support the local businesses and to be part of the community. I know there was a lot of comments made at the public meeting that were regarding the site plan and design, and I know that this is a rezoning request, so I tried to keep my comments specific to that, but I do look forward to working with a developer to incorporate other goals of our district, like public art and green space, reducing curb cuts on Ingersoll, and traffic calming measures on 31st Street into the development to help it further blend into the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional, any other speakers in support of this project? Any individuals in opposition? Any neutrals? Seeing none, the applicant does not need to have a rebuttal for five minutes. If you wish to speak, you have five minutes. If not, we can go ahead and close the public hearing and hear from the commissioners.
I'm going to move, staff.
Thanks, Carolyn. Any additional discussion? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. That brings us to our last item on the agenda for tonight, item number six. Request from Stamarino LLP for the following regarding property located at 2505 East 40th Street. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. B, amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to low-medium density residential. And C, to rezone from N3A Neighborhood District to N3A2 Neighborhood District to allow the development of the property for two household units. Shreyoshi will be presenting from staff.
Thank you, Chair. Shreyoshi Chakravarti Planning Staff. The subject property that's seeking rezoning is located at 2505 East 40th Street. This is in the Sheridan Garden neighborhood area. The subject property is currently a vacant lot, and the applicant is proposing to construct two household residential units. In other words, a duplex, which requires that the property be rezoned from N3A Neighborhood District to N3A-2. The -2 allows the lot to have two residential dwelling units. As you can see, the surrounding area is primarily single-family, low-density residential. This is a picture of the subject property. It's currently vacant. You can see the surrounding houses and the character. Again, this is a rezoning, we're looking at the use of the property for two dwelling units. The applicant did provide a prototype that they plan to use. This is not a final design, but it does provide staff some context on what the applicant is thinking and gives you an idea of the character of the building. But this will be in an N3A-2 district, which requires that the design of the building type that is to be used for review would be a house type B. That is the design regulation that staff will look at when, at the stage of site planning, when building design and other site details are being worked out. Staff notes that the proposed use generally conforms with the surrounding neighborhoods. It's close to dark transit routes. There is also, the character of the residential area fits with what the applicant has proposed and the conceptual drawings that were provided. Following a rezoning, the applicant will be required to do a full site plan, which requires that they comply with the requirements of Chapter 135 and the regulations of the building type. Based on the conceptual drawing that was provided, staff did notice, did point out a few potential areas where the applicant could seek waiver. However, again, this is a conceptual design, and so it's not final. That will be determined at the site planning stage, but the bullet points that you see here are potential, potential design regulations that staff identified that could be, needed to be modified during the final design stage in order to ensure that a waiver may not be needed. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of this request to rezone to allow these two residential dwelling units on the, on the subject property. We received quite a few comment cards in opposition from the neighbors, as you can see here on the consent map. And I will go through the comment cards. In summary, a lot of the comments had to do with concerns with multiple households, dwelling units, leading to issues such as increased dwelling units leading to issues such as increased noise and issues with maintenance and crowding and so on. I'll just, I'll just let you scan through these. As I move forward. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question, please. With the number of oppositions, will there be a requirement for a supermajority by the council?
No, the, I'll go back to the map here. So the percentage is 12.4. If it were to exceed 20%, that would require a supermajority.
Tell me that again, please.
If it exceeds 20%, that would require a supermajority.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, I will invite the applicant to come up to the podium. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in afterwards. Thanks, Sri Oshie.
Good evening. My name is Todd Stamm, and I'm half of that Stamarino. I'm at 74317th Street in Des Moines myself. I'll talk a little bit about the property, but also about Stamarino as a young, small company. What we're trying to do, and it almost feels a little difficult to teach, to tell the story because it sounds a little bit like tooting your own horn, but what we're trying to do is do affordable, really high-quality stuff. We think that's what people deserve. We've started with, well, for lack of a better word, a dump. We bought on Northwest 45th, Northwest 11th Street, Northwest 11th Street, which is now a delightful small home where a family lives and resides. And this was a property that we identified where we could build something that would be worthy of the neighborhood, would be high-quality, would actually, contrary to what one of the common cards that raised the property values. What was interesting, we held a public meeting about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, and the neighbors left and right and behind the property all showed up to this public meeting, and we're all in favor, as we can see because they didn't fill out cards opposed, but they were all at that meeting, and they were all pleased with what we're trying to do. For us, it was simply a matter of economics, that if we built something that was a two-family home that was modest inside, so it wouldn't stand out too much in the neighborhood, it would suffice what the neighborhood would want, and we could make it economically work. So, yeah, that's kind of, that's the whole story. I don't have site plans yet because, of course, it wasn't for us to make, start making designs of a duplex if we potentially ran into, oh, that's too bad. So, I mean, we have another, I can show you a printout, how we're trying, actually, that original design, we kind of went, yeah, we don't want two garages in the center because that's ugly. So we're looking something more in this kind of vein that looks almost like a single-family home, but will hold two families, modest-sized families. So, yeah, and that's what we're trying to do, and technically, we're looking at currently at other places that we've done. Stamarino also fixed up a property recently in Sherman Hill that was granted, a grant from the city for its quality of work. So, and we all know Sherman Hill, I mean, I personally lived there, where we went from being the quote-unquote hood to now being one of the most desirable neighborhoods in Des Moines. And so we know something about bringing things back from the brink and bringing from awful. But so, it's definitely our intent to build quality, wonderful stuff at a reasonable price for people that can afford it. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but that's, that's the story.
Any questions?
Is the alternative that you have there in that drawing intended to have garages behind as per others on the street?
If, if, if there's room on the lot, we may put garages tucked behind, yeah. Yeah, we may. If there's room on the lot. If there's not, there won't be, there'll just be driveway. Yeah. Because we don't want it to get too big, because that would be so out of proportion with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm just, I think probably Will and I agree on this piece as well, the big garage doors on the front are probably both non-keeping and outside of what the ordinance intent is as well, right?
No, no. I mean, we were kind of in a hurry putting things together when we, when we submitted this, otherwise I would have submitted this one. I'll leave it here for people to see, but this is much more.
We can hand it over to staff, just for the public record.
If you don't mind, we'll, that's okay, just hand it to Francis there.
Thank you.
We'll pass it around, thank you.
That's much more in the spirit of what we're thinking. We're also thinking about potentially doing brick, if that might, I mean, that might make it even more high-quality, and so then we might do a portion or all of it in brick to make it even better, so.
Do you have a price point for this? Are these going to be rental units, I assume? Are they going to be rental units, or are they being sold?
I'm not, we're not 100% sure yet. We're fascinating between we will hang on to it and we'll rent them for the 12, probably the $1,200 to $1,500 range. I mean, the only concern we heard during our meeting was, oh, as long as it is, it's going to be Section 8. And I don't know what that was all about, but anyway, so there is a chance we'll rent them and keep them. There's also a chance that my, my secretary who lives currently on these, I would like, like to live there maybe, and then she rented out the other half, so then I might sell it to her, I don't know yet.
I'm just curious as to how they fit in with the property values around in that neighborhood, if they're, if it's going to be significantly higher or significantly lower.
I think it's probably going to be in the top quarter percent, I mean, the top quarter of the neighborhood values. It's not going to be lower. It's not going to be.
Right.
No, absolutely not. Any other questions?
Other questions for the applicant? It looks like there are some mature trees on site, so hopefully you get to keep some of those around, but.
We will do everything in our power. Des Moines landscaping, we'll probably do all the landscape design. The person who will be strongly involved with the design did also the design of a building that we own on Bella Avenue, which now has community gardens in front of it. The design of our building on Ingersoll, which, side note, nice project coming three blocks down from another building I own on Ingersoll. But, so, yeah, no, it will be designed to be pretty also from a landscape perspective. It won't be a grass field with a house in it. No, it will not. And trees will be honored and stayed because they're important. Actually, part of what we're trying to develop into slowly but surely in this house, maybe a first attempt, is to build homes that are more and more and more quote-unquote off the grid. We may put solar on it, we may put heat pumps in the soils so that we have earth heat to use, retention water so that the garden can be used with, you know, from water that was collected from the roofs. I grew up in a tree-hugger country, and living here, I think that's not a bad idea for us to live by, too, so. That's part of what we're doing also with these homes.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign in.
I will.
Are there any speakers in support of this project? Any in opposition? Any neutral? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and let the commission deliberate.
I'll move staff.
Got a motion on the floor to move staff?
Just to clarify, so the only scope of what we're doing here is changing zoning to allow for two units on this property versus anything else. Is that right? None of the other stuff is relevant.
Right, yeah, this is just rezoning stage to allow a two-unit house, or duplex.
Motion on the floor, staff, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign. I think that was unanimous. Motion carries. Are there any committee or directors' reports?
Nothing that's come into mind.
Is there, is there a way to ask one clarification to Will's point earlier on the traffic study piece? Because I think that we have had traffic up from time to time, and it does seem like there's uncertainty and clarity of direction where they're at. I guess my hope, sorry for not earlier when I was looking it up, it seems like from the actual traffic standards, if the data that was presented tonight is accurate, 4C08 warrant 72B does seem to indicate that that intersection should have lights. And it isn't clear that a traffic study has been done there. If the actual accident rate is what's reported, that does hit the standard. So I guess I am echoing Will's urging that we can go back and say, hey, what are we actually doing? Because there hasn't seemed to be in any of the reports we've seen too now from traffic that this has been raised, and the standard here seems very, very clear on your accident rate that it should be actually looked after, especially Todd's point here, that that has been a problematic intersection for years. What can we do to make sure it's pushed harder?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to share what was presented and discussed with the Traffic and Transportation Division and let them do their job, which is to look at that and to think it through. I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's much more for us to do. I mean, we review these projects and rezonings, the city has a city council adopted policy as to when a traffic study is required. If it doesn't hit that threshold, it's not required. But I think, like I've said earlier, let's, let's put this into the channel of where it belongs, which is getting it in front of the Traffic and Transportation Division and letting them react to it and doing what they think. And I think the points of the fact that we have this long-running construction making things worse is valid as well.
I do think, though, that, like, I've even actually personally paid for a public request for data from traffic, because some of the data seemed to be counter to what I thought it was. This one, if reported accurate, does hit what I understand to be the threshold that it should be reviewed, and there's no indication it has been reviewed, and there's no indication of the data that's been presented to us since the last time they were up here was showing that they were paying attention to it.
Yeah, the data is coming in on a comment card, I mean, we'll share this with traffic, we'll let them do their thing, we'll.
Came in on four cards, right?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Gosh. Is required. Architecture firm have small handwriting. Scotty Fitness, very similar to you.